Okay, let me call to order the December 6, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Pottstown Borough Council. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get to start tonight with a presentation, and this is to recognize the employees' years of service.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to be here to present our Seventh Annual Years of Service Awards to our employees. So, we initiated this recognition program in 2016 in appreciation for our full-time civilian employees. Our service milestones begin with five years, and they extend all the way through to retirement. And on behalf of Borough Council and myself, I want to extend congratulations on all to reaching these significant milestones with the borough of Pottstown. Your loyalty and commitment, each of you have shown each and every day to this organization and to the betterment of the town, is really appreciated. We thank you for, you know, always going above and beyond and always seeking to excel in your jobs. And as I always say, employees are one of our best resources that we have here. It's our human capital resources. So to start off the presentation for tonight, for those of you that are in attendance and asked that you come up, we'd like to get a photo with you, and then you can return back to your seats. And if you're online virtually, just give us a wave when I call your name, and we can go from there. So, all right, we will have a video after the presentation, a short one for you guys all to take a look at. So, let me begin with our five years of service. And first, we have David Haygood. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have Daniel McFall, who I don't think is here with us tonight, but we can still give him applause. Lauren Stilson, also not here. And Jerry Kezick, which I believe he's on the big screen. Congratulations, Jerry. For those of you that weren't able to make it, you can stop by HR and pick up your awards. Now, next, the big 10 years of service. First, we have Tommy Troutman. Congratulations, Tommy. All right, next up, we have Marley Boone. Congratulations. Next up, we have Michael Lanhart. I can't believe you guys are all here 10 years already. I'm not far behind you, though. Well, I'm not far behind you in that either. All right, next, we have Keith Place. Keith wasn't able to be with us tonight, and I don't see him online. Congratulations, Keith. Next, we have Jimmy Maurer. Jimmy, congratulations. All right, now, for the really big one, the 30 years of service, Brent Wagner. Congratulations. I don't think of retiring anytime soon. All right, that looks like everyone that we have. So as I said, we're going to have a video for you to enjoy to help put some faces to the names for those that cannot be here tonight. And then later, we'll share that on social media, so be sure to check our social media pages for that. Thank you.
That enough for one of you?
I think so.
Okay.
Until next year.
Okay. Under subcommittees, the infrastructure, Counselor Lebeduski, other than the attachment? Yeah. Transportation, any meeting? No meeting. Safety committee, anyone? No one.
Sorry, our meeting is on Monday, so we'll report Monday.
So should we move that to Mondays?
Yes, please.
Can you do that? Thank you, Stephanie. Efficient methods, Counselor Lebeduski.
Just a continuation set up, rec pay. We're looking at streamlining our info also with homeowners on the express website, improving the bill pay and billing in vote information. Just a progress, just an update of progress from last month as well.
Great, thank you. Ordnance Review Committee, Counselor Bosco.
No meeting, but we'll be meeting in January.
In January. Under the boards, the Emergency Services Report, Chief Hand, may I see you?
It's listed online.
Right.
A reminder that December 17, Santa Claus will be around on the bike.
On the trucks, thank you. Human Relations, Ms. Levin Good.
Yeah. Just sit right down for real quick. That's fine, that's good, nope. Good evening, councilors, council president, and Madam Mayor. The month of December is full of religious and cultural celebrations. Hanukkah is a Jewish holiday beginning on December 7 and ends on December 15. It is an eight-day festival of lights, celebrated with nightly menorah lighting, prayers, and special foods. Christmas, December 25, is a Christian holiday commemorating the birth of Jesus Christ, and Christmas has become a cultural holiday for many, including non-Christians, and includes many celebratory traditions, including decorations, trees, wreaths, sharing meals with family and friends, holiday music, movies, exchanging gifts, and awaiting the arrival of Santa Claus. Kwanzaa, December 26 through January 1, celebrates family, cultural, community, and the harvest. Kwanzaa is not a religious holiday, it's a holiday to celebrate African heritage and African-American culture. Families who celebrate Kwanzaa often celebrate it in addition to Christmas, Hanukkah, or other religious holidays. The first day of winter is on December 21, and the commission's approved October minutes are included in your packet and posted on the borough website. And the commission's December meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, December 12, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. All are welcome to attend, and the commission wishes a joyous holiday season to all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And from the library, Ms. Lipsky.
Hello, how is everyone this evening? I just have a couple of quick things to share, actually three. The first thing is, is thank you to Zach, the new Assistant Township Manager, who visited us during our Gold Star Celebration on November 16. So Pottstown Regional Public Library is now a PA-forward, Pennsylvania State-recognized Gold Star Library, so we're really excited about that. The second announcement is December 16, we are having our Second Annual Cookie Walk. So, visit the library website for details, or reach out to me, and I'm happy to tell you all about that. That's going to be at the library from 2:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, December 16. And finally, we are in the final phase of offering student cards to every student in Pottstown and Potts Grove School Districts. So that's all students, kindergarten through seniors, and it will be attached to their student IDs. So we are in the process of uploading the data, so we're hoping to have that live by Friday, but if there's any student that wants to come in now, they can bring in their student ID, and we can make it work for them. So, that's a really great partnership that we're really excited to be able to do and to provide resources and services to all the students in the Pottstown area. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Very good, thank you. And we do have an attachment from the Ricketts Center, anything to add, Counselor Kirkland?
No, not really. I did see that the membership was over 1,000 now. That's good.
Over 1,000?
Yeah, I remember we were pushing 500, so, so membership's really good.
It's not too long ago.
Yeah, it was long ago, right.
Excellent. And from, we don't have Counselor Lindsey, Trinidad can report Monday on the school district, if you'll add that. Okay. Solicitors' General Discussion, Mr. Garner.
Good evening, Dan, good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, last month, I think Matt talked about the process of the reorganization of Borough Council, which occurs in January. And so I thought it might be helpful to delve into that a little bit deeper, and tonight just talk briefly about the council meeting rules, as that seems to be a point of discussion at various council meetings. Even though you were all coming back and there'll be no new faces on council in January, it's still considered to be a new council, and therefore, at your reorg, one of the things you'll be doing is adopting your meeting rules. And I think at your place is a copy of the existing meeting rules that you adopted in January of 2022, and now would be the time to start reviewing those rules, so that when you get to the reorg meeting, you'll be in a position to either adopt these rules or some version of rules, so that you can operate as the new council come January and throughout the year. One of the rules that I hear a lot about, and we talk about council meetings, is the fact that the rules say that council is not supposed to respond during public comment. And to give you a little background on the reason for that, it's basically twofold. One is, under the Sunshine Law, the actual topic that we're addressing is public comment. It's the chance for the public to raise issues of public concern to the council. So it's intended to give the general public and residents the opportunity to speak to council. The Sunshine Act really doesn't talk about question-and-answer sessions or anything like that, it really talks about public comment. So, a number of years ago, when council adopted rules, they decided that with allowing three minutes for the resident to speak, it would be appropriate to allow the resident that time and not interrupt, or not respond, or get into any kind of debate at a meeting. So that's the basis for the rule. Certainly, if council wants to change it, that's appropriate, but it's not required. Again, it's, many municipalities don't respond to the citizens' comments at the time. I know in the past, some council members, under counselor comments, have responded to the citizens, which is appropriate time to do that. But, anyway, the rules are there, please take a look at those rules and be prepared at reorg to either adopt these rules or changes to rules, whatever you see fit. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about either the process reorg or the rules.
See none.
No, thank you.
You'll see this again, January 2.
Thank you, Stuck. And the mayor's report, Ms. Henry.
Good evening, happy December. A couple of announcements, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Vanny and Ward Two for being the winners of the World Kindness Day Challenge. And as a reward, Ward Two gets to pick an area or a block to clean up by the rest of council and myself, at Councilwoman Vanny's discretion in the springtime. So, thank you for participating. I also want to congratulate Hiram Quintas and Stave and Stable for being named the Mainline's Critic Choice for Date Night. He's at 232 King Street, and I just want to read this little blurb, because when you open Mainline magazine, and it's very pretentious, it's very cool to see Stave and Stable and Pottstown in there. Getting to this quaint spot is a bit of a haul, but so worth it. You and your partner can indulge in dandelion salad, seared foie gras, roasted bone marrow, she-crab bisque, and other upscale seasonal fare. A caviar menu elevates the proceedings. Like, who doesn't want to come to Pottstown and eat that, right? Also, Hiram brought home to Pottstown the World Food Championship Trophy, where he competed and won first prize in Dallas, Texas, for his live-fire championship entry. So, we've got a lot going on in Pottstown. Since last time, we had a fantastic opening weekend to December. I want to thank Paid, Parks and Rec, Tower Health, who sponsored the Step Challenge. I also love that our officers, Fisher and Guth, participated in the Step Challenge while they were on patrol. Schuylkill River Greenway is the Carousel Alley, the Pottstown Senior Carolers, Dragon Poet Team, EMS, and Beverly's Pastry Shop, who, by the way, ran out of cookies and hot chocolate after serving, I think the number was 260 people. So, we had a lot more people to serve, it was great that we ran out, we had a great turnout at the tree lighting, I think it was one of the best we've ever had. Pottstown School District kids sang carols, and they all helped participate and join me in the countdown for the tree lighting. So, it was great. Also, Enchanted Elements Apothecary opened at 105 East High Street. You must go experience the store. You can get most of your holiday shopping done, all in one store, and it's fantastic. Oh, and another business opened on Saturday, the Brick Oven Pizza and Indoor Part of the alley, they had a very successful soft opening on Saturday. So, congratulations, John. And, oh, another business, I forgot, opened officially on December 1, as you may have seen in the news, DJ Palets at 215 South Washington Street. I want to welcome to Pottstown Dan Olman and team at DJ Palets, and thank John Roberts for a job well done. And that was just this weekend, right? So, we also had the Pottstown Historic Go-Forth Holiday House Tour, and it was top-notch. It was a perfect rainy Sunday morning, got in a trolley, and you got a tour of all these cool buildings in Pottstown and a whole history lesson. Like, I learned so much, I will post on Facebook, so, because I know we have a lot of other things to go through, but, very, very, very cool. Oh, and they're selling their holiday calendars, and so I got mine from my office with all the cool houses for 2024, and they have very cute Go-Forth beanie hats now for the winter. What else? Oh, the Rotary Dristic Governor Diane Donahue came to Rotary last week, and it was a pleasure meeting her. She spoke about this year's international theme, which I thought was extremely appropriate and fitting, which is Create Hope in the World. It's surrounding mental health awareness, and the mission is to be a beacon of hope in this world. I also attended our Police Department Staff Meeting, had additional meetings regarding the unhoused, mentored four 7th grade football players, thank God I watch college sports. And I reviewed and revised the 2050 Climate Action Plan from Montgomery County Planning Commission Steering Committee, attended the SRPRA Board Meeting, I'm sure you may have seen the news today, a formal press release is coming out on Friday, I believe, so keep an eye out for that. I attended the community meeting at the Hill School, and I'm really excited about the new headmistress, Devaney, and her mission to expand collaboration and partner with the borough. It's been great getting to know everyone at the Hill School, and I am really excited to see what happens next year. Oh, and I want to thank Art Fusion for hosting the meeting this morning. We made glass mosaic ornaments for Sanatoga Nursing Home. And then my family came for Thanksgiving, they were supposed to come just for Thanksgiving and stay overnight, and that turned into an entire weekend, because they fell in love with Pottstown, they didn't want to leave, they had so much fun going to the farmer's market, shopping on High Street, walking through town, and devouring their, I'm sorry, devouring Beverly's pumpkin mousse gingerbread pie, which they wanted me to mention, because they're very sad she's closing and want to buy all of that pie. And, so that was last month. Coming up, I'll be quick, December 1, started Elf at Steel River, you can purchase tickets now, it's going through the 17th. They have Friday, Saturday, and Sunday performances. Today is, what's the 5th or 6th? December 9 and 16, from 11:00 to 2:00, Art Fusion has their Van Gogh Secret Kids Holiday Shop, where kids 12 and under can go shopping for their parents and be secret, and parents, you should send your kids there, you won't be disappointed with anything they buy out of that shop, very cute ornaments and art and jewelry. On, what, 7th? Tomorrow, sorry, 2:00 to 7:00. If you haven't signed up, the Ricketts Center is hosting the blood drive. This is being sponsored by the NAACP and the Ricketts Center through the American Red Cross. You can go to their website to schedule an appointment. If you can't make it tomorrow, there are other donation times available later this month. December 8, from 6:00 to 8:00, Fusion is having their holiday party at 341 Beach Street. December 9, 12:00 to 2:00, at the Carousel, Santa is coming. December 10, from 11:00 to 5:00, is the Frost Fair at Potts Grove Manor, they're having a colonial puppet show and historic entertainment and a holiday market. Also on the 10th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Rivet, is the Holiday Craft Show, where you can finish your holiday shopping. Let me do that. December 16 is the Art Gala, or Be Resilient, at their offices, I hope to see you all there. December 17, 8:00 to 11:00, at North End Fire Company, Breakfast with Santa, it's $5 for adults and kids eat free. December 17, from 12:00 to 4:00, is the Beekeepers' Christmas Market, Makers Market, at 939 East Schuylkill Road. December 21, 7:00 PM, at Christ Episcopal Church, which is at 316 East High Street. This is the longest night, the National Homeless Memorial Service, where we celebrate life for those in the homeless community who have passed away in the past year. You can also attend virtually if you can't make it in person. December 30, from 10:00 to 12:00, at the Carousel, is the Kids Countdown to New Year's, hosted by Pottstown Discovery Center. You need to register, so go to their website, PottstownDiscoveryKids.org. They're going to have games, ball drop, crafts, and snacks. 12 night tours at Potts Grove Manor from 10:00 to 4:00, Tuesdays through Saturdays, and on Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00 now until January 7. And save the date, January 1, is our 15th Annual Polar Bear Plunge at Riverfront Park. Registration starts at 9:30, the plunge is promptly at 10:30, where most of us up here will be jumping in in tutus and various other costumes, and we hope to see you there and ring in the new year with us. There are, is the Season of Giving, so I'm just going to mention the YMCA, Hobart's Run, Food Drive, Operation 143, Ricketts Center, Beacon of Hope, and Salvation Army are all having food drives and toy drives now until December 15. You can go to any of those websites or go into the actual organizations, YMCA, Salvation Army has a tree, pick a tree, pick a family and buy a gift, everything needs to be in by the 15th. Oh, and last but not least, this is a little personal matter, on top of all of that last month, my car, I got a 3-inch hole in my engine block, and probably sprayed oil all over Pottstown. And unfortunately, that car had to be donated to Cars for Kids. And at the same time, my identity got stolen, so I'm extremely thankful for the Police Department and Lieutenant Morrissey and the Senior Center for hosting the fraud workshop that I participated in a couple weeks ago. Just an FYI, if this happens, because it is going around, do not deposit any checks that you get in the mail if you aren't expecting them to come and you don't know why you're getting them. I got checks from Citizens Bank account that I allegedly owned, if I had deposited in my real bank account, they would have been able to attach my account. So, what I had to do is go to all three credit reporting agencies online and fill out and freeze my credit, so I cannot unfreeze my credit. It is permanently frozen for now, because this person has my information and has opened account at Citizens Bank and Target and Wells Fargo and all over the place. So, please protect yourselves, freeze your credit if you see anything weird coming in the mail. I started getting letters from Chase saying your credit, your application for a credit card is in review, and I thought that was weird, since I didn't apply for that. So, please do that. And, so I had to buy a new car with no credit, and so, just to give back and be in line with our 2050 Climate Challenge, I got a, or Climate Action Plan, I should say, I got a 2024 hybrid, so my carbon footprint will be smaller in Pottstown. And I think that concludes my report, thank you.
Two questions.
Yes.
North End?
Yes.
Is what date?
The 17th.
17th.
17th, from 8:00 to 11:00.
Okay. And second, your comments on identity theft, is there a way you can post it for everybody?
Yes, and it's also on the Senior Center website, and it's also on the Police Department website, but yes, I will post that, maybe we can put it on our Facebook page.
Thank you. And from our manager?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, I'm happy to share some exciting updates regarding our ongoing development projects and also some of the holiday preparations within the borough. First, we'll start with our LED street lighting project, which we've been working on now for over a year or so.
Run, Food Drive, Operation 143, Ricket Center, Beacon of Hope, and Salvation Army are all having food drives and toy drives now, um, until December 15th. You can go to any of those websites or go into, um, the actual organizations, YMCA, um, Salvation Army has a tree, um, pick a tree, uh, pick a family and buy a gift, everything needs to be in by the 15th. Oh, and last but not least, this is a little personal matter, um, on top of all of that last month, um, my car, I got a 3-inch hole in my engine block and probably sprayed oil all over Pottstown. Um, and unfortunately, that car had to be donated to Cars for Kids. Um, and at the same time, my, uh, identity got stolen, so I'm extremely thankful for the Police Department and Lieutenant Morrissey and the Senior Center for hosting the fraud workshop that I participated in a couple of weeks ago. Um, just an FYI, if this happens, because it is going around, do not deposit any checks that you get in the mail if you don't, aren't expecting them to come and you don't know why you're getting them. Um, I got bank, uh, checks from Citizens Bank account that I allegedly owned, if I had deposited in my real bank account, they would have been able to attach my account. So, what I had to do is go to all three credit reporting agencies online and fill out and freeze my credit, so I cannot unfreeze my credit. Um, it is permanently frozen for now because this person has my information and has open account at Citizens Bank and Target and Wells Fargo and all over the place. So, please protect yourselves, freeze your credit. If you see anything weird coming in the mail, I started getting letters from Chase saying your credit, um, your application for a credit card has, is in review, and I thought that was weird since I didn't apply for that. Um, so please do that, and, um, so I had to buy a new car with no credit. Um, and so, um, just to give back and be in line with our 2050 Climate Challenge, I got a, um, or Climate Action Plan, I should say, um, I got a 2024 hybrid, so my carbon footprint will be smaller in Pottstown. And I think that concludes my report, thank you.
Two questions.
Yes.
North End?
Yes.
Is what date?
Um, the 17th.
17th.
17th, from 8 to 11.
Okay. And second, your comments on identity theft, is there a way you can post it for everybody?
Yes, and, um, it's also on the Senior Center website, and it's also on the Police Department website, but yes, I will post that, um, maybe we can put it on our Facebook page.
Thank you. And from our manager?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, I'm happy to share some exciting updates regarding our ongoing development projects and also some of the holiday preparations within the borough. Um, first, we'll start with our, uh, LED street lighting project, which we've been working on now for, uh, over a year or so. Um, through a DCD grant funding initiative, uh, we're progressing towards completing an upcoming installation of additional architectural streetlights. So, these lights will be placed on sections of King Street, as well as High Street from Washington to Madison, and then the stretch, uh, of North Hanover Street, uh, from High Street up to Beach Street. Um, furthermore, there's going to be an arrival for delivery of remaining, um, LED Cobra Head streetlights, uh, early next year, and once we have all of those, uh, in, in, in place and installed, that will complete the Borough-wide LED conversion project. So, um, strategic plan for the installation, we'll prioritize, uh, first, the LED installations in the core of the town, and then we'll st- extend out to the other neighborhoods that we haven't, um, been covered yet. And then, um, once we complete that, the borough will achieve full LED conversion, and that'll be a pivotal milestone in fulfilling one of our Sustainability Plan goals. So, that, that'll be a nice, a nice achievement for us. Um, and then, just in spirit of the holiday season, I just want to extend my gratitude and, and thanks again to our diligent staff for their efforts to embellish the borough, which included a display of, uh, snowflakes on High Street, um, installation of the 18-foot Douglas fir, uh, holiday tree, and then the 6-foot wreath that we have now on, on, on Borough Hall, and then as Frank mentioned also, um, the Fire Department, they'll be escorting, um, Santa throughout town on December 17th, I think, starting at noon, and that'll spread throughout each neighborhood, so look for, look for Santa to, to be in your neighborhood. And as the mayor mentioned, School Creek River, um, Passenger Rail Association, they did receive, um, the Federal Corridor ID designation, so that's, that's really great news for advancing our rail service in Pottstown. Uh, that will be, uh, an initial $500,000 that will be used for feasibility of the, uh, corridor, but the federal ID is more important than that because it now, uh, opens up the corridor to get additional, uh, federal funding in the future for, um, actual implementation of the rail service. So, you know, with all these developments, I'm delighted, um, that, uh, the mayor had announced several new businesses, uh, that we have, uh, throughout town. Um, there were, there were just two that we've, that we missed, I think, uh, because there's been a lot, but, um, which is a good thing. Uh, but we have, on Shoemaker Road, we have Panera, they, they're starting to serve customers now, so that's open, and Chipotle, also on Shoemaker, is, uh, set to open on December 15th. Um, so I think, you know, with the ones, the establishments that the mayor mentioned, and these, it's, um, just really, uh, truly a testament to the growing investment in vibrant business landscape within Pottstown. You know, and I think it proves the borough's resilience through the COVID pandemic, um, that it's still an attractive, um, hub for businesses, um, and it's evident that businesses still continue to flourish in Pottstown. So, uh, I just want to thank all of our staff, our partners, um, our economic development partners for their ongoing support and dedication, um, to the progress and the vibrancy of our town. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have 215 South Washington Street seeking a waiver of land development. Any comment?
I'll take that one if you're okay with that. Um, I think everybody's familiar with this property, it had its ribbon cutting, and the applicant has filed a land development waiver request. Um, our borough engineer has reviewed the application and supports, uh, the granting of a land development waiver. Uh, I would remind council that, that the applicant still needs to comply with all of the borough ordinances, uh, and the plans will be reviewed by the borough engineer with respect to stormwater and all the other things that normally get reviewed under a SADO provision. So, uh, with your permission, it would be listed for a recommendation of the granting of the land development waiver on Monday night's meeting.
Very good. Any objection to listing it? All right, we'll do that one, Jenny. Uh, 12 is the Chestnut Street Park Improvements, uh, we have the bids?
Uh, not yet, they'll be opening tomorrow, and just as a reminder, this is for, um, playground equip- equipment surfacing and other minor improvements for the park.
Okay, we'll read them and move on at, uh, Monday evening. Second Baptist Church.
Uh, yes. This is, uh, sure, this is the Second Baptist Church Minor Subdivision. Presently, the church, the parking lot, and the single-family dwelling all exist on one parcel. The church has filed a minor subdivision plan and simply wants to separate the single-family dwelling from the church and the parking lot. Uh, this was reviewed informally by the Borough Planning Commission in November. Uh, it will be going back to the Planning Commission for, uh, procedural irregularity, but the Planning Commission supported this. Um, the applicant had indicated it would comply with all the comments, uh, of the Borough Engineer's Letter, and they also intend to install a fence to separate the church from the house, which is a requirement, and the fence that they install will comply with the provisions of the Borough, uh, zoning ordinance. I think you also have in front of you tonight potentially a waiver request letter, or there's three minor waivers that are being requested for this project. Again, there are no new improvements for this, this is simply drawing a line on a plan to create two lots where there's one. So, uh, this would be listed for some type of conditional approval on Monday, if you guys are ready to do so.
Hearing no objection, we'll list it for Monday. Okay, and 14, the Bright Hope Playground, uh, this is for a waiver of financial security. Would you like to comment, Mr. Johnson? Evening.
Evening, evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. Uh, Joel Johnson, the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Housing Authority, and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity this evening to, uh, uh, request a waiver from financial security for the development of the, uh, or installation of a playground equipment at, at the Bright Hope Community. Um, really, four point, we have a, we submitted a letter to, uh, to the Borough Manager, I believe everyone has that letter, but just in, in brief.
We do.
You have the letter, so I, I won't, I won't bore you with, with the letter, but, uh, again, sort of, this is some high points that, you know, the Housing Authority's actually had a relationship with the borough for 85 years, we've had a presence here, and I think we have a very strong relationship, um, and appreciate all the cooperation that's, uh, been afforded to the Housing Authority throughout this process, and we would request your, uh, approval for this waiver of financial security this evening.
Okay, any questions from council?
Yeah, I would just add that, I mean, you know, given our, uh, relationship and, you know, certainly the Housing Authority's good standing and, and their status, they've also got some pretty strict requirements as a part of their funding, so I mean, that gives us all kind of an added assurance that the project will adhere to the proposed plan and be completed with diligence. Um, so, uh, staff has reviewed it, and we would support this waiver request. Um, you know, I think that it's a little bit different than, uh, when you're, um, asking for security from a, a private developer. So, um, our only, uh, recommendation would be that, you know, if waived, that, um, we have a land development agreement that outlines, uh, the authority's responsibility to reimburse the borough for any out-of-pocket expenses, so that's typically, um, fees that are, um, that come from engineering plan reviews or inspections, legal costs that, that are associated with the approval process.
Okay. So, we'll list that for Monday evening.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, under zoning, uh, A is, uh, Monsef, Den Sad for 101 East High Street. We have the attachment on that. Any comments?
Yeah, I can, I can just go over briefly, Dan, if that's okay.
Okay, Chuck.
This, uh, is a request for a Mediterranean grocery store or food market. Um, the grocery store or food market is actually permitted, a permitted use in the downtown district in a standalone building, but it's not permitted in a mixed-use building. So, the applicant is asking for zoning relief so they can open the food market grocery store, uh, as part of the mixed-use building. In looking at this, we just, uh, staff wants to make sure this doesn't evolve into a convenience store, the representations in the application are that it will not, and accordingly, if council's inclined to do anything with this application, we could suggest to the zoning hearing board some conditions to be imposed if the relief is granted. Those conditions could limit the hours of operation to what a traditional grocery store would be open, and also limit the sale of some of the products that, you know, would be sold at a convenience store as opposed to a grocery store. So, it's obviously council's decision whether you want to take a position or no position, but certainly the grocery store food market, uh, would be a permitted use in the downtown if it was located in a standalone building. So, uh, that's your decision for Monday night.
Uh, Ryan, I think this is your ward, any comment at this time?
Actually, I believe it's Lisa's, isn't it?
Oh, it's yours? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, no real comment.
Okay.
As long, I like the idea of being able to, um, have some rules around it, but I think a Mediterranean store would be nice.
Okay, you want to consider the conditions between now and Monday?
Yeah.
Very good. All right, we'll list that for Monday. And B is for AMA Paper Products on Cherry Street. Mr. Garner?
Uh, yes, this, uh, everyone is probably familiar with this building, this is the former Maria Santa Lodge, it's a, a large building, uh, on Cherry Street, it already has, uh, at least one use as a doggy daycare, but it is a large building, and the, uh, again, being in a traditional town neighborhood, uh, it's not conducive for residential use. Uh, the applicant, in this case, is seeking zoning relief, uh, to use a portion of the building, I believe the lease says about 2,000 square feet, for a wholesale distributor of janitorial and smallware restaurant supplies, such as paper cups, plates, containers, napkins, paper towels, those kind of things. There's plenty of parking, uh, it seems to be a good use for a portion of this building, uh, but it does need zoning relief since it's not a permitted use in the traditional town neighborhood zoning district. So, uh, we can list it as possible action for Monday, unless you just want to let it go to the zoning hearing board, that's up to council.
Right.
I think that, Lisa's ward again, right?
That's also your-
List it Monday?
Mm-hmm. Okay, we'll do that. Okay, uh, 16 is for the Pottstown Borough Authority Articles of Incorporation Amendments. Chuck?
Yeah, Dan, I'll take that one as well, if it's okay.
Yeah.
I think I had forwarded to council earlier this week a short memo with some information and background regarding this issue. Uh, we're not asking for any formal action for Monday, but we did want to talk about this, um, during the meeting to give you some background information on what the authority is requesting of council. Right now, the authority, uh, is basically limited to water and sewer matters, although it's expanded, uh, somewhat to stormwater. The authority is asking Borough Council to, eh, expand its purpose slightly to specifically include stormwater management and some other items that would benefit both the authority and the borough. Uh, this would require an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Authority. Um, the authority's also asking to extend the life of the authority, which is within the purview of Borough Council. Under the Municipal Authorities Act, you can only extend or provide an authority life for 50 years. I believe right now, the authority's life is set to expire in, uh, 2038. Uh, they have some long-term agreements that go beyond that date, and they'd like to extend their life to coincide with those long-term agreements, which in my view seems to be a reasonable request. Um, the other thing they are asking, and Borough Council knows, but we don't deal with it every day, is that there's a management agreement between the borough and the authority as it relates to the operation of the water plant. And over the years, the authority has provided some funds to the borough, uh, for use of those facilities. Um, the modification to the management agreement would serve to basically codify those contributions to the borough, uh, so that they can continue to be made. Um, I've been working with Vince Pompo, the authority solicitor, on this since October, and if council has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. We're drafting documents, uh, for both the authority and council to review and hopefully approve. Uh, councils would have to prepare an ordinance to change the Articles of Incorporation, to extend the life and to expand the purpose, and council would also have to approve, as the authority would, an amendment to the management agreement. Um, again, my memo has more details, uh, you can read that at your convenience, but, uh, for right now, we just wanted to make you aware of the issue. Uh, you'll probably see this on the January council meeting with more detail and some possible action items, and I, I realize I'm probably hitting you cold with this, but if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them, and if, uh, after you review the memo, you have other questions, please reach out to Justin or myself. Um, I don't want to speak for Justin, but I think Justin views this as a win-win for both the borough and the authority if, uh, this plan is enacted, so that's where we are.
Okay, any questions right now?
Not right now.
None? Very good, thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Uh, the trash rates for 2024. Justin?
Yes, so, the, uh, this is the second year of our five-year service agreement with JP Mascaro, so, um, that started, um, January 1, uh, of last year, or this year, of next year, on January 1, the amount that residents will pay for this service, uh, will be $381.76 a year, or 95.44 per quarter. So, um, that increase equates to, uh, 8.68, um, per quarter additional that we have, uh, through the existing contract.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question for the, um, can we try to schedule, um, in the next year, um, a tour of the recycling center that they have?
Oh, wow, yeah, they just, they just had one, we can see if, if, if we could get another one set up.
Okay.
Yeah, I wish I'd known that you were interested in going, because I, I think, uh, Public Works just did that, so.
I just want to, yeah, and make sure.
But yeah, they're always happy to show off their space, so.
I'd like to do that, too.
Sure.
Just because I know the contract, like, the bulk of it is recycling, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we'll just send out to any, any of the councilors, uh, or elected officials that want to go.
Okay. Trash rates. Okay, 18 is, uh, about the animal control officer, we're proposing an exchange for a vehicle agreement. Mr. Garner?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Um, the Police Department is in the process of disposing a 2018 Ford Expedition Sport utility vehicle. Obviously, it's been used pretty heavily by the department as the, um, the ACO has expressed some interest in, in having that vehicle, we value the vehicle at about $11,000. Um, so the Police Department is, uh, recommending and willing to go along with an agreement whereby the vehicle would be transferred to the ACO. In return, the borough would receive service credit from the ACO for $11,000, the, the value of the vehicle, so it would alleviate the borough from, from paying $11,000 of service fees, uh, beginning next year if you approve this amendment to the ACO agreement. Um, I've prepared a, a one or two-page amendment to the agreement, it's being provided to the ACO as we speak, and if council's inclined, that would be ready for your consideration Monday evening. So, it's really just kind of a barter for services and would save the borough some cash.
Thank you. Okay, we'll list that Monday. And, uh, for the year end, we need to adopt a 2024 proposed budget. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, so at this time, I'd like to call our Finance Director, Marley Boone, up to give us a update on where we are.
You may sit if you like. I mean, after all, you've been here 10 years.
Is it on? Okay. Um, so just as a reminder, last month, we reported, um, a 2.96% tax increase with a deficit of $339,902. The proposed millage would be 14.650, and, um, the overall budget was about 66.5 million. and the overall budget was about 66.5 million. I have good news tonight to share. We did receive some favorable numbers from insurance and healthcare, and we were able to bring the budget lower. So we would propose a 2.67% tax increase, a proposed millage of 14.609 mils. That would cover an overall deficit of $306,427. The average annual tax bill would be about $38 for properties valued at $100,000. If council votes to adopt this budget, we will provide, well, this is what we are asking council to adopt Monday night, but I will provide the updated full budget for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Finance Director? All right, we'll list that.
Thank you.
Great job, though.
Thank you.
Nice squeeze, and we saw that. Okay, and we'll also need to adopt an ordinance to fix the tax rate for 2024. According to the adjusted numbers, we'll do that Monday. The January 24 council meetings.
Yeah, so per the requirements, we are required to have a reorganization meeting on January 2, 2024. So this year, the Committee of the Whole falls on the next day, January 3. So we're asking if council has a preference to combine the reorganization and Committee of the Whole into the same night on January 2, or if they would rather hold two separate meetings, one on January 2 for reorganization and then one on January 3 for the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so we can think about that over the weekend, and we'll move on at Monday evening. And the 2024 council meeting scheduled?
Yes, that's attached for your consideration.
Got it. Now, for the upcoming board vacancies, we have a four, one-year terms to expire December 31, 2024 for the Blighted Property Review Committee. For the Environmental Advisory Council, one vacant term to expire August 10, 2024. For Land Bank, one vacant term to expire April 9, 2026. For the Pottstown Borough Authority, one five-year term to expire January 1, 2029. And Mr. Eckhart has requested to be reappointed. For the vacancy board, one one-year term to expire December 31, 2024. Have we heard from Mr. Dur?
Yes.
He'd like to be renewed. And for the zoning hearing board, a one-three-year term to expire January 1, 2027, and one three-year alternate term to expire January 1, 2027. And Mr. Boucher is the only one so far. Okay. Now, it's time for the comments from citizens present. Anyone online? No?
No chat, okay. First up is Marlene Armato, Four Park Court. Just a reminder to everyone, we'll have about three minutes to speak, and we may get back to you after the meeting.
Do I need you to repeat my address again? Yes, okay, Four Park Court, Marlene Armato.
Thank you.
I know you don't hear this very often, but thank you.
What?
Thank you to council members, our mayor, our borough manager, and any borough staff that had a role in the new street lighting. I was outside a polling place on Election Day when they were being installed on North Price Street. And when evening came and the lights came on, it was amazing. Voters came in and they were so pleased that they could see to walk and felt very, very safe. And the person I was working with lives on North Hills Boulevard, and she said that they had already been installed in her neighborhood, and she felt so safe walking from her car into her house that she could actually see to walk. And people were out walking their dogs and were just amazed that the lighting made such a difference. So our neighborhood got it shortly afterward, and it made an unbelievable difference in our neighborhood. So thank you for being careful and thinking about the residents of Pottstown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Philip Tease, 63 South Evans Street.
Philip Tease, 63 South Evans Street, Pottstown. I'm here to talk about what I've been reading, reading in the paper, all about the situation over here along the river, the vagrants. We've had no end of problems all year long with these vagrants walking through the neighborhood down in the south end. I need to remind you, they got into our church school, St. John the Baptist, last winter. They trashed the one classroom on Saturday night, and then they trashed the bathroom. And when we opened the doors Sunday morning, the kids came walking into this mess. This is just one example of what's going on. And I want to urge council, I saw in the paper, now if the paper didn't have it right, you correct me, but they said in the paper that we couldn't force them off the property, or should I say not arrest them? Well, we need to get the names of all the people who live down there and anyone new is found down there, charge them criminally for trespass, for starters. We need to clean that place up. We need to cut all the overgrowth away from the river, away from the Matatoni Creek, so you can't sneak around. And these are practical things, and as a matter of health and safety, once we get this cleared out, we should wash it down with the fire hoses and then put lime all over the ground because they have been using it everywhere for a public facility, which we understand. And just some practical common sense. And as far as anyone knew, knows, anyone complains about all this, well, I would suggest the family that's got so much money in Chester County behind this, don't, why don't they open up their land down there, their property, their estate, and put the people down there? We wouldn't complain if they got a bus and came up here and took them. You know, we are poor people in this town compared to most of Montgomery County. And most of us don't just whittle our thumbs, we work. And I'm a senior citizen, and I'm still working, and I'm proud to be working. And my family came to this town to work, not to live for rent. Now, anyone that's mentally ill, I wish we could take care of them. The state should take care of them. Anyone that's a veteran, the veterans should take care of them. Anyone that don't work, get them out of here. That's all I have to say. I think I've covered it all. And again, this outfit that wants to bring these people here, they put a warming center across the street, plenty of corner, from a grade school. And they're leaving those people out in the morning when the little children are walking to school. That really is considered of this community.
That's your time, sir.
That's the whole thing to say. Thank you. And please consider the taxpayers, not these people.
Thank you. All right, next up is Leah Brownell, 11 Brower Lane.
Lee, Lee Brownell.
Lee Brownell, 11 Brower Lane, is that?
That's correct.
Where's that at?
Pottstown?
Pottstown, okay, just making sure. Is it in Pottstown Borough or Lower Potts Grove?
It's in 19465.
That's North Coventry.
It is.
Yeah, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name's Lee Brownell. I'm a citizen of Pottstown, a new citizen. I moved here recently. Before this, I was connected with the military for about 10 years. I was a former Marine Corps spouse. I worked with the Navy for three years. And so I say this really passionately, I am very concerned with what's happening. I am incredibly worried about it. And I'm here to ask Pottstown to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. As citizens and people of conscience, we want to ensure that the space that we participate in do not contribute to the maintenance of apartheid regime or profit from grave human rights violations. In the United States, in Pennsylvania and in Pottstown, we are complicit in the apartheid and genocide that is being committed with our money. The federal government supports apartheid with over $3.5 billion annually from our taxes going to support Israeli weapons. The Pennsylvania state government owns over $50 million in Israeli bonds. In 2022, Pennsylvania sent more than $314 million in manufacturing goods to Israel. Pennsylvania sends our police to train in apartheid tactics in Israel. They enact anti-BDS laws that take away our choices as citizens to not be complicit in genocide. Everyone sitting up here, everyone in this room, you literally don't have a choice outside of supporting the genocide. Does that make sense? Our banks, our clothing, our groceries, top to bottom, you don't actually have a choice. And I'm calling to ask, I'm here to ask that Pottstown to take a stand against this. I, I urge you to be on the right side of history. If you're not already ashamed of your silence about what's going on and the genocide that we in this room are funding, you will be, you will be, you will be soon, right? Because this is not going away. Silence is choosing the side of the oppressor. It allows apartheid to continue, and it allows it to spread. The tactics that are being used in Israel against Gazan citizens, against people, are being brought back here. They have been for years. We know this. In black and brown communities, they have been telling us this the whole time, and white people won't listen. In a state that is named after a slave owner who stole the land from Lenape people under the walking purchase, Pennsylvania has a long history of violence against indigenous groups. Pottstown can be a leader in Pennsylvania to stand against Pennsylvania's racist history, our colonizing history. We can't just ignore it. I ask you to reject all forms of racism. Pottstown should demand a ceasefire of free Palestine and to declare the borough of Pottstown an apartheid-free zone. There is no peace on stolen land, free Palestine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Number 22. Taking a motion to authorize the filing of an appeal from the decision and order of the United States District Court dated November 28, 2023 in the case of Better Days Ahead Outreach, Inc. versus the borough of Pottstown.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion?
Motion to appeal?
And no second.
I'll make a motion to instruct the solicitor to, to all things possible with our council to appeal the United States District Court decision dated November 28, 2023 in a timely fashion.
More taxpayer money.
And a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second.
Why don't we discuss this? Scott has something to say.
I made my comment. I don't need to rehash it. We all know where I stand.
Any other comments?
We're asking for clarification to of the judgment as well. So there's potentially, once there is clarification, if we need to, in theory, we could, you know, not go through with appeal.
Yeah, I think.
No, for this time, I think it's important that we do it.
I disagree.
Yeah, I, I think the clarification is important to give the, the police direction as to what they're supposed to do because as it exists right now, the decision basically states that a property owner may not utilize, the borough, municipality may not utilize the police force or the criminal justice system to remove people who will not stop their ongoing trespass, unless, of course, the borough houses all these people. That puts an untenable burden on a municipality since we're considering taxpayers' money. So that's my, I think, why we need to do that.
Any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of going through with the appeal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, and it passes. Thank you. Okay, councilors' comments. Mr. Kirkland?
Uh, just to, happy holidays to residents of Ward 7 and residents of Pottstown.
Okay. Mr. Minestra?
I was down on the 400 block of, of High Street, and I have really cool news to report. I've noticed the last two businesses on the, is that the north side? I noticed the owners sweeping and cleaning in front of their business.
You're here.
I also noticed that they have put up a little Christmas tree and decorated it in front of their, in front of their store. And then when you drive by at night, that place is lit up so that it is extraordinarily bright down there. So the work that we're doing that is to clean up these, these areas, in some places, it's actually taking effect. And I encourage everybody to patronize that, that business because they're trying to do the right thing. They're trying to do the right thing. They are making their place bright and clean and festive. I, I applaud them.
On the sub- Closest to Washington?
Yeah, 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 that one. It's like the Halal Market, and then there's another one, right there. Yeah, not the ones, no, 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 the other ones. But I think they're doing an excellent job, and I really appreciate that. The other thing that I would like everybody to support is I saw that the mayor has, is advocating for tree, or the light posts to be decorated. Okay, and I believe it's $85 a pole? Okay, all right, yeah, I, I think that's awesome. I think that's going to make a very big difference in Pottstown. I encourage everyone to do it. Our, my partner and I are, if, if we can get the forums, we would like to sponsor four of them. So that we can have as many as we possibly can. Hopefully, all the poles will be covered. That's it. Thanks. Happy holidays, all.
Thank you. Mr. Lebedinsky?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Ms. Fandy?
Well, it's hard for me to say happy holidays when we're kicking homeless people off the only property that they're on. That's my comment.
Mr. Proskel?
The boys had a good time at the tree lighting, and then, as usual, they got more hot chocolate on their coats than in their mouths. And it was fun going to, you know, it's kind of, kind of nice. I could just walk and see a holiday concert at the Coventry Singers at, at Trinity Reformed, actually, good to bring in the new, with the Christmas season, some 300-year-old Christmas carols. It's great.
That's good. Thank you. Ms. Hendrick?
Nothing.
I, I do want to add, I couldn't make it, my wife and I had pretty bad calls. But I do want to put my thanks out on behalf of our family in the borough to the Amy and Amy team. They did a phenomenal job with the wonderful house tour this year. Just kudos to them. Thank you. Stay in there. We can do it again next year. I have nothing more. Meeting adjourned.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.